One. Good evening. Welcome to the January 11th, 2021 Board of Education meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Law Day.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Monsell.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Rollo Woods.
Here.
Teterich.
Here.
Savage Williams.
Here. I'll just read this very quickly. Governor Pritzker recently extended the disaster declaration related to the COVID-19 pandemic for all Illinois counties and extending the ability of public bodies to hold virtual meetings in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Based on the current public health concern, the board president of Evanston Township High School District 202 as head of the public body has determined that it is neither practical nor prudent to hold an in-person meeting of the Board of Education on January 11th, 2021. Okay, so before we start our meeting, actually, I would like to read a statement that I've prepared for this evening. Last week was tough. We seem to have a number of difficult weeks, and I am personally impacted by these struggles, as I know many of you are for sure. Last Wednesday, we all watched in horror as a violent mob seeking to overturn President Trump's election loss pushed through police barricades to storm the U.S. Capitol. It is important to educate our students about democracy, which includes how our government should work and connect the current events with the history and past patterns in order to help them understand. This is how we impact our students and encourage them to think critically about these events. At Second Baptist Church yesterday, the sermon was about our responsibility to children in our community. Over the past several months, our children have seen George Floyd and Breonna Taylor and others murdered. Jacob Blake shot seven times in the back and no accountability to be pursued by the police officer who shot him. Peaceful protesters being forcibly dispersed and often violently handled by police officers and the National Guard, and the death of hundreds of thousands of people by COVID-19. What our children saw last Wednesday, January 6th, was a display of white nationalism that any white nationalism that any enforcement or security failed to stop. Pastor Neighbors from Second Baptist asked us to keep our eyes on our children during these times, which to me means it is important for us to make sure we see them, connect with them, and help them get through these times. Our children are battered down by these events. Now more than ever, we must be there for our children to show them the wrongs of this world and to show them that right is far more superior. We must focus on them and care and love, inspire, protect, and nurture our children. As I listened to this sermon, I couldn't help but think about our tremendous responsibility at ETHS. And later, we're going to be talking about our plans to address their educational needs as we move forward in this pandemic. But now, we are called to fulfill our colossal responsibility to educate our students. We must recognize that this uncomfortable climate during the political unrest is an opportunity to discuss issues of racial disparities, the protest, how they're handled, as well as what privilege looks like in our society. I know that at ETHS, our teachers, civic teachers, history teachers, economics teachers, theater teachers, art teachers, music teachers, PE teachers, science teachers, career and tech teachers, English teachers, math teachers, all teachers are doing this with their students. Learning by doing, here we are once again, calling on those who touch our students to see our students, connect with them, and help them get through these times. I am so proud of ETHS. What we are doing matters. What we call our faculty and teachers to do is beyond prepping for a class or preparing a lesson or being on Zoom. We are asking them to create a positive, inclusive environment in a climate of belonging and dignity for all. I want to recognize our educators for the work they did and are still doing to help shape a different world for all of us. I want to end with a quote by Toni Morrison, one of my favorites. "I know the world is bruised and bleeding, and though it is important not to ignore its pain, it is also critical to refuse to succumb to its malevolence. Like failure, chaos contains information that can lead to knowledge, even wisdom." Thank you for letting me have my moment. So now, we are at item number four on our agenda. Written communication, Dr. Beavis, do we have any?
We have no written communication this evening.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, we're at item number five, items for information, and the first item is an update on e-learning.
Well, thank you for your words, President Savage Williams. And they are so timely, not only for all that has been happening in our nation, but also in what our teachers have been doing in this pandemic and in this remote learning. And what you reference is exactly right. Our teachers last week helped our students process the violence and the danger that they were witnessing, and that continues this week. And it's so good that you lift that up. And in-person learning would be wonderful to do that, but I can attest to the fact that remotely, they did not miss a beat on the ability for students to process this. They've learned how to maximize that virtual environment, and they very much, as they do every day, rose to the occasion. And I say it in that realm to lead into this item about an update on our e-learning, because at the board's request, this is a standing item on every agenda. And we have some presenters to help us out this evening, and I'll give a little bit of an outline. We're going to begin by talking about what we've been doing regarding student and adult well-being during this pandemic. And Taya Kinsey and Marcus Campbell will share in that presentation. Then we'll, I would recommend at least, you know, you can structure this how you want, that maybe the board would want to take a little time to make comments or ask questions on that aspect of the presentation. Then we want to start talking about some of the pre-implementation planning that is now going on as we anticipate that somewhere in our future, this semester, we anticipate that there would be a hybrid model that would be utilized. And I say pre-implementation because we have a plan, and it's been published for quite a while. But now, right before winter break and here in the month of January, we're really working vigorously on what the pre-implementation of that is really going to be, right down to the granular details. And of course, the next phase would be when we do announce and go to a hybrid, and that would be, of course, the implementation phase. But tonight, I want to remind you that I had announced prior to winter break that we would remain on remote learning, certainly through the month of January. And we knew then that there was a predicted post-holiday surge. There was concern, and it was being said at the time by the public health experts, Dr. Fauci would be the most notable example, that December had been the darkest month yet for the pandemic and that January was predicted to be even worse, even the darker month for the pandemic. And so far, with today's statistics, with the number of cases, with the number of hospitalizations, with the number of deaths, it's a sad commentary to say we're setting new records. These are new records we don't want to set. But the death rate is just off the charts right now in this country. One thing that we didn't really have a lot of knowledge of, back when I said that we would use the month of January to monitor the situation, is the knowledge of the mutated variant of the virus. But we've been hearing a lot about it. It's not only in Europe now, it's in several states. I heard today that it's now been found in Indiana. And we know that that variant is, according to the public health officials, far more contagious than the strain that we've been dealing with. I read one New York Times article that said that it was somewhere between 10% to 60% more infectious. The United Kingdom that's been dealing with it now for several weeks says that it's 70% more infectious. And so we have a variant in nearby, in adjoining states that could be as much as 70% more contagious than what we were talking about before winter break. So I know that we made the right decision to use the month of January to assess what's happening with the pandemic, but at the same time, we have not lost sight of what our concerns for students are, our concerns for adults in this district are, and our concerns for how we continue to make our e-learning, our remote learning, as successful as possible. And as I lead into it, I'll just indicate that I would hold up how ETHS is handling the virtual environment to any school district, anywhere. Our staff, our students have really been making the virtual learning work, and we know that it's more challenging, but we also know that they have been able to do it. So let's begin with some discussion about well-being. And Taya Kinsey is our Associate Principal for Student Services. That would include all of our area of social workers and school nurses and counselors. Gives you an idea about the breadth of that. And Dr. Marcus Campbell, Assistant Superintendent and Principal of ETHS. So I'll turn it over to the two of you.
Thank you. I'm going to begin screen chair now. Can you all see that okay? Great. So again, my name is Taya Kinsey. I'm the Associate Principal for Student Services. And myself and Dr. Campbell will be talking about well-being update from first semester in part because, yes, just like Dr. Wetherson said, many things happen within Student Services that have to do with well-being and directly address Goal Two. And we also know that we as an entire school are committed to Goal Two, and there are many ways that that's demonstrated. So Dr. Campbell's here as well to talk about that from a school-wide perspective. I do want to recognize first that our journey to be Evan Strong is not that easy. And you know, Pat Savage Williams, when you read that memo to the board just now, I think that really stayed with me around our continued work around belonging and dignity for all, and yet what it takes to get there and what we have witnessed and the trauma that many of us have been through and repeatedly around our racial and social justice. So I wanted to recognize that, also recognizing that well-being services are not a magic wand. They're part of a bigger picture that we are committed to. And that's part of why, one of the other pieces that we're going to be talking about tonight is embedding social emotional learning in all facets of what we do in the classroom setting, in our engagement, and how all of that really comes together so that we're building our resilience together. So as we're moving forward, sorry about that. As we're moving forward to think about our journey to be Evan Strong, we're recognizing that we possess a lot of empathy, and that has been exhausting. There's a lot of suffering, a lot of losses. So we just wanted to take a moment to honor those. The milestones that students had wanted to experience along the way, food insecurity, unemployment and underemployment, our families who've had loss of housing, being in the building together as a whole school community, our in-person instruction, our racial and social injustices in our nation and locally, illnesses of students, of families, of staff, some short and some long, and even deaths. So we recognize all these have an impact, and we also recognize that none of us have exactly the same story or the same journey, and it's brought up sadness. It's brought up grief and anger and anxiety and depressive symptoms for many of us at times. And we're continuing to focus on how, what role empathy really plays. So Dr. Murthy, 19th Surgeon General, has a wonderful quote. And that is about our capacity to show our love and connection to each other and to our students. And his quote is, "All of us have the power to be healers because all of us have the power to love, build relationships, to see each other." So part of what we're really continuing to see is the resilience of our students, the resilience and hard work of our staff and the hard work of our students. And when we're thinking about that, the rewiring of neural pathways and responses to these losses and traumas and resilience, we know doesn't mean that it's perfect or that our reaction is always perfect, but that we continue to rise again. And that's one thing we have been witness to repeatedly. We also know that, we often say it's a great day to be a WowKit, but some days are harder than others, and sometimes it may not feel like it's a great day to be a WowKit. But what we know is that's not a permanent condition. That's what resilience is about, is getting back to that greatness and experiencing and supporting each other. We also, throughout this, want to just be able to recognize joys and successes. Our formal well-being report for Goal Two will come in March, so you won't see a lot of data in this presentation. We're giving you an update from first semester. But what we do want to begin to say is, we know that while there have been many hard times, there have been a lot of joys and successes along the way, and our appreciation of student voices, and of course, our staff are amazing, and our families and our whole community, our students are first and foremost. And thinking about the structured and individual ways students have shared their voices has been really powerful. From the Student Union, Evanstonian, there are many parent groups that we have met with as well. And so we wanted to thank everyone and really honor that. So as we're looking ahead, we thought it might be helpful just to briefly center ourselves on Goal Two, well-being. And when we're thinking about well-being, we're really focusing on what are the high school and lifelong skill building? While these have been really difficult times, what we know is our students are demonstrating and building skills for resilience, because you have to build resilience. It's like empathy, where we assume that things are innate, but actually, we're building these opportunities for managing our emotions, for setting positive goals, for rebounding, right? Establishing and maintaining positive relationships or rebuilding positive relationships, making responsible decisions, and we see that completely as a lifelong opportunity. So we'd like to start by, as a quick update, our Health Services. This is a list of what are all the varied services that are going on for well-being. Our Health Services Nurse's Office has been very busy supporting our students and families with everything from contact tracing, identifying medical needs, and that impact on academics and helping lead along the way. And our Social Work Services, our Mental Health Services through group, individual, crisis and case management, and that includes support through the psychologists and the counselors as well. Our ETHS School-Based Health Center, separate from our Health Services Office, has been another fantastic partner along the way, as have many community partners, Ben and our McKinney-Vento students. Our families who are homeless, we continue to prioritize in ways that we need to ensure that we're removing barriers for them educationally as well. Our housing and our food and clothing and obtaining what families need to be able to focus on learning. And along those lines, you know, I mentioned responsiveness. We may not always get it right the first time, but we often get it right the second time. So we wanted to share, we've been doing food distribution and material distribution from the beginning, but one of the things we learned along the way is that some families need extra help, even to get to the high school. So when it's needed, we're now delivering those things, including the food distribution to families. And you know, actually, some of the people who've been supporting that more directly are about to speak after me. So we are really grateful for all those opportunities. One of the other ways that we've worked hard to be responsive is through our evening programs. As you can see, we have many new evening programs and continued the existing programs. So we had our Family Talk Series, the Executive Functioning Evening Event, still is happening. Our WowKit Future Series still happening, our academic and college and career planning and financial aid also happening. And then there's new opportunities for students and families, really specific career pathway events. Our Suicide Prevention Evening Event for students and families, a grief evening event for students and families, and then navigating the emotional landscape of COVID-19. And I'll be directing you to websites at the end, all of which have links, and many of these have videos of these events. Our Crisis Care Team unfortunately has had too many opportunities to do work around grief. And as you all know, we've had many losses to our WowKit community from students, former students, staff members, former staff members. And so we pride ourselves on understanding how we can best support both students and support our staff, who are working so hard every day to think about how they can do right by students. Our problem-solving with student support teams and our IEP teams has continued full force, and our pre- and post-hostilization program, our ETHS PHP, continues to support students and sees that many students have significant needs. And while sometimes it can feel like numbers have quadrupled in terms of hospitalizations, we're seeing some similar numbers to last year as we look to finalize information from first semester. We have lots of new information and resources that we've been adding, both for our well-being services, for our mental health services, but also for what teachers can utilize in the classroom setting and for what families can utilize at home and students can utilize. Our Rebel Human Access, our ETHS Mindfulness Studio, which is now new and interactive, our ETHS Mindfulness Coaches are new and supporting staff all the time, our ETHS Virtual Calming Room, and of course, our counselor lessons and our executive functioning website are always that we've continued. And Marcus is going to walk us through a little bit more about embedding social emotional learning in everything we do, including the classroom setting.
Thank you, Taya. We're all managing little buttons here. Thank you, Taya. And I just want to start by saying that the social emotional impact and the mental health impact of our students is something that is not lost on this administration. The impact of our, on our students, the impact on our staff, the impact on this administration. This is a tough time for everybody, and I just want to also take the time now just to thank and advance all of our WowKit family members for their strength and resilience. And as we give this report, know that we're not giving this report out of a administrative, simply administrative duty, but it's a moral one, it's an ethical one for us. It is something that we believe wholeheartedly in, and we have looked at these efforts. We have revised these efforts. We have enhanced these efforts because we know how hard this lingering pandemic has impacted our families and our school community, but also the other national context, the political context, the racial context of what we're dealing with. So we just want to just say that, that this is not just an administrative duty for us. This is something that is deeply personal for all of us because we recognize that we're all in this together. So as we talk about embedding SEL into our curriculum and recognizing that the well-being and the mental health of our students doesn't just fall on our Student Services staff, it is something that is a school-wide approach. It is something that we have been working to get every administrator, every leader, every teacher, every staff member to say, the well-being of our students can be seen in my role, whatever that role is in the district. And some of our student leaders from the Evanstonian recently asked for info on the behind-the-scenes about well-being and embedding what that's about. And so we talked to them, as we're talking to you, about getting some of these mindful moments into our lessons, teachers' lessons in the classroom, and to also really be empathetic with teachers because they're learning to teach in a remote environment. That's an entirely different set of skills. And in addition to that, learning to embed SEL into that curriculum and to do it in a pandemic. There's such layered complications and considerations trying to teach chemistry and trying to teach the content in this environment. And so we're working with the teachers and staff and students on executive functioning. We are having teachers and staff who are reaching out to us, and we're responding immediately to questions and concerns and things that teachers are noticing in classrooms, what we hear. We're following up on those requests immediately, even over break. When we're supposed to be unplugged, we're still, many of us are still checking email and resolving situations even over the break. We've had professional development that is including modules for how to develop SEL into the classroom. All of our teachers were required to do that prior to school, and we continue to support them in that way. There's also been grief professional development. That's something that is just a reality that we're dealing with. And as Taya has mentioned, not just losing loved ones, but just losing the sense of normalcy and understanding the grief process behind all of that. Taya also mentioned our new mindfulness coaches. We have two teachers, and this is pre-pandemic, who were just raring to go on engaging more mindfulness practices into the classroom. And so we took a major step forward and gave them some time and compensation to really be able to focus on this aspect of SEL during this pandemic. We have also had teacher-to-teacher SEL talks, well-being surveys in the spring. We've done some expectation setting on what anxiety and depression looks like in adolescence, sometimes externalizing. indications as well as internalizing things. As I said, we've engaged some mindfulness moments in classes. And we have also had a lot of our, our PE has always done a lot of our work around social emotional learning. But there are leaders in this. And I would also like to say a lot of our teachers are also relying on their PE colleagues to really help, help them to do this in their content area. Our FASH and this year's book was reflecting, our one read was reflecting on building empathy and resilience, which is part of the SEL work. Our FASH has engaged in restorative lessons. We've had SEO toolkits and so many other things. So, you know, we're trying to be as detailed and exhaustive as possible, but we want to, we really want people to know all of the things that we have really been working hard to, to, to bring together. Next slide, Taya. So students with 504s are also receiving their accommodations. Students with all levels of need, including those who have higher levels, most significant students have needs, those needs are being met. And where, and where their challenge is, we are working with the families. We're, we're working with the IEP team to make sure that student, that students' needs are being met. Those students are still working toward their IEP goals, including the related services of OTPT, speech, social work, all of those things. Case managers are reaching out to students and families and teachers in pairs are supporting students directly, small groups, one-on-one. And we're continuing to offer the full continuum of services and remote learning. And students in general at our engagement services too, just to, just to, just to name that. And next slide, Taya. So as our leadership decisions and actions, we're asking ourselves, this is something that is essential to every conversation and every meeting that we have. How are we centering equity and well-being in our actions and decisions? That's across the board. And I'm just proud to say that a lot of our, our teachers and staff members, everyone's asking that question because it's front and center to who we are as an organization and who we are as a school right now. So just to name that, this is what we're asking ourselves. And as Dr. Wetherspoons always says, well-being has been threaded throughout all of our decisions for many years and we're, and we're growing that. Staff members are working hard and they're following up. As I said, we have staff members working on grief supports, their check-ins on credit recovery. Teachers are checking in beyond the classroom. I heard a great story from a student who just was, wanted to give up and wanted to quit, wanted to fail the class and the teacher simply, and stopped attending the class for a short time within the same week. And the teacher noticed that that student had not come to two consecutive sessions and reached out to the student. And the student said, that teacher saw me. And out of all of the students that his teacher has, his teacher saw me and it motivated this student to want to pass the class. And, and, and the student did that. And that's, that student who was sharing that story with me said, I just want to tell you about my favorite teacher, Dr. Campbell. And I'm thinking, oh, okay, what is going to, I really perked up. I wanted to hear her story. And the baseline was that the teacher really showed care in reaching out to her outside of class hours to make sure that she was okay. And that qualified as her favorite teacher and it really spoke volumes to me. And so as, as reflecting back on that and so many other things, we've done our school-wide well-being services are reflecting in our kit care packages, our extracurricular activities, athletics. We continue with our outreach call and personalizations with these connections. There were over 1,000 calls by support staff and leaders in August and Novembers, in November, to personalize setting students up for success. We called over 1,000 kids, identifying needs and helping students and families. And we set, though, helped set those kids up for success. And in November, all of the support staff support and those who have been repurposed and the leaders called every student who had multiple Ds and Fs and, and began to, to problem solve with those family, make notes so that we could follow up with those families. Everybody did that. I did that. Taya did that. Everybody did that. And it's just part of our way of continuing to personalize and connect during this, during this difficult time. Our deans have their caseloads of callers. So the callers are being managed by the dean, by the great level dean, who was a part of the great level team. We've done home visits, which is something that we have always talked about doing. But we knew that during this time, it's been absolutely necessary to connect with families at home. Our athletic program is engaging in a speaker coming to speak to our athletes about mental health. And we are just thoughts and, and, and prayers for those who believe in prayers. I've just gone out to the Glenbrook North Kim School community for their loss over the, over the weekend. Our students were impacted by that. As a matter of fact, I saw one of our students on television over the weekend talking about that impact with him. So we had our, our athletic mental health program was not done in response to that, but just done because we know that this, this idea of mental health support is being owned by everyone, including athletics. We are asking for, for tips with Home Access Center, making sure that teachers are keeping that up to date. So we're thinking of every possible thing to make sure that families are informed, families are connected and they're having what they, what they need. As I said, the next slide, Taya, I'm almost to my point here. We've had our social emotional learning and building our culture of care with our care packet, care packages. Our teachers introducing, have introduced themselves virtually. Our new semester, we had teachers to send out more introductions to their new classes. Our fall conferences was a way to connect and build care. We have our student of the month every month, every, every Monday, we have a board meeting. My day starts at 7:15 a.m., listening to all of the wonderful stories of our kids, being recognized by staff who have just gone above and beyond. It is the most healing moment to hear all of the kids who help the teacher in so many ways on the screen. Either they have, and it's well beyond having their cameras on. It's really creating a culture of care within the classroom. And that's, you know, in speaking to the theme today, I hear a lot of that in student of the month, that teachers are nominating students who are helping to contribute to this culture of care in the classroom. Our National Honor Society ceremony was just a fabulous production and really emphasized the culture of care. We continue with our Spirit Week. We have these spirit, we call it the spirit bear that goes around. We gives it, we give it every week or every other week to a staff member who we just want to recognize and uplift their work. That continues to happen virtually. And as I said, student and staff well-being is still very, very important. This is why we're lifting these things up. And just to pivot quickly to attendance, this is the, the next slide here. These are the estimates of the semester one attendance rate for the, for the, for, for where we, for where we are for the first semester. Assuming that there are 74 days in semester one, we're giving each, well, you can see the breakdown there of, of race and gender and by grade. And this only includes excused and unexcused absences, which is what we normally do for absenteeism. But this does not include homebound, medical or hospitalized students. Taya, I'm going to turn this back over to you.
Thank you, Marcus. So you can see that the truth is that our staff have done tremendous work in supporting, in continuing to instruct students in the academic content area, in the social emotional supports, the check-in stories just abound in the ways that staff are reaching out to students and how much meaning that has had. And that is all true and our students are helping each other. Our students are coming together to help each other and to inform us too. And our larger community is doing the same. So we are, we are very grateful about the ways that we're coming together. We do want to just once again, we believe that you can't underscore enough. Acknowledge, care, tell. Acknowledge, care, tell is rooted in the science of suicide curriculum. And it's something that we have adopted at ETHS for a few years now to identify whenever there's a concern about someone's well-being, whether that could be potentially harm to self or others, that we have to acknowledge it to the student, we have to say that we care and we need to tell someone. And what we see repeatedly even now is that is saving lives. And we want to thank you all for embracing that as a whole community for prevention. Our hotlines are always available that we have posted for nationwide, 24/7 hotlines. We do want to also encourage everyone to continue to embrace the opportunities and resources, including on Mondays. We've had a few students along the way say, well, I'm not coming on Monday for that resource or that support because it's not really schoolable. And most students have said that they do want to come. So we're encouraging students to shift the mindset, families to really embrace that there are so many opportunities and resources all week long, including on Mondays, that we want everyone to continue to be able to utilize. And we also want to recognize that in terms of the responsiveness, we know that we don't have a magic wand, but we are going to keep celebrating our successes and continue to listen to concerns so that we can keep pivoting, even when we're tired of pivoting, and I'm tired of saying the word pivoting, that we can continue to do that in the right way. And I'll just leave us with our navigating emotional landscape of COVID-19 webpage continues to be a go-to spot, whether that's access to the mindfulness information or access to find your social worker. There are all those components. So we're going to leave you with that and say thank you.
And President Savage Williams, did, did you want to go ahead and entertain some questions or comments at this point?
Yes, yes. I was looking for my own mute button.
I just wanted to make sure that that worked for you.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. And yes, I'll ask the board, would you, anybody have any questions you'd like to hear more about or any comments that you'd like to make?
And I just want to thank staff for their thoroughness in just going through this and spending a lot of time and thoughtfulness in, in talking about the well-being of our students. You know, that indeed is a goal of ours. And, and for as long as I've been on the board, we've talked about how engagement and kids being, participating in activities is a part of that well-being as well, right? And I, Marcus, did not know about the young man in Glenbrook North, was it? And, and you know, I'm, I'm a football mom, four years removed. And I can't imagine what our students, let alone our athletes, who are some of the hardest working, resilient individuals that I have grown to know. Their dedication is amazing. You have students that are, that are, that achieve, you know, wellness and, and excel in, in the classrooms and our athletes can do that as well. And then you have those that have a strict routine and regiment of participating and engaging in activities and sports. And, and for that to be taken away or no longer being away in how they stay connected can be extremely challenging on any given day, let alone during a pandemic. So my condolences to, you know, the Glenbrook North School District. And I just want our students to understand that this too shall pass. We will all get through this and you have everything in you that you need to survive this probably better than the adults. So, you know, just hold on, please. But thank you, staff, for just lifting how important this is. And because what it really does is that it sets the tone of the decisions that are being made, right? And, and so that's, that's hard, that's hard to do. But I, I just want, you know, you captivated me from the beginning to the end and my heart goes out. So thank you.
Yeah, I just want to certainly second everything that Monique just said. And also to really acknowledge that with COVID and all the changes that's been, that's brought about and all the other things that have been happening in our world in the last week, in the last month, in the last year. Just, there's just so much. And I, I agree, our students have everything they need and they're stronger than they think. But the fact that our staff and, and all of our staff, right? It's, we're certainly grateful to all of you as administrators, but we know that you're the tip of the iceberg in terms, or the spear, I guess is the right metaphor, in terms of all the rest of the staff being there for students when it's hard for them. They have children at home. They have sick parents. They're struggling with worry about the world. And, and it's just, it's really a testament to how amazing our staff is, how strong the staff community is, the support that you all as administrators give and, and the dedication that our teachers and the rest of our staff put into their jobs, that even when it's hard for them, they're there for our students. And I just, I mean, it's really overwhelming to even think about that for a moment, let alone that to be your full-time job. So, you know, there's, we can't even give you the words to express our gratitude to all of you and, and the rest of our staff for this amazing work because it's, it's essential, it's necessary. Our kids desperately need it. We're all worried about our students, but they're doing this work in an amazing way in a time when it's, it's not easy for them individually. So thank, please thank them on our behalf.
We definitely will. Thank you.
I want to take this time to also echo what Monique and Pat have expressed. I, I think it's really, it's, I mean, I am so pleased and really just the ability of this district to pivot in response to student need is unprecedented. In my career, I've, I've been involved in delivering social emotional SEL curriculum and worked closely with teachers. And it's not easy. Actually, it's harder to engrain it and embed it in, in what you do and trying to get through lessons and everything. But what I've seen evidence of is, I mean, really since just before break, well, since this fall, when we've been talking about it. I mean, you all, it's, have just done a tremendous job of pivoting and creating a culture where wraparound supports is the norm. And it's, it exists in the classroom and exists outside of the classroom, which is critical. And I mean, I'm just, just knowing, having an idea of how difficult it is to create systems and put them in place to you all as leaders, as administrators, and just hats off to the teachers that are taking this on. Because as Pat was saying, you know, they're dealing with, with their wellness while they're trying to care for our students. So I'm just, I'm so grateful for the district, for the leadership of the district and for all of the teachers within earshot of this. I thank you many, many times over for this. Thank you.
So I'll also just, I think, close this out by really saying that I agree with all of the comments that were said. This is one amazing district and I've always known that. But now I guess I've relearned and, and seen more what has been done. And I know there's, I know it's not perfect and I know there's work to be done. And we don't even know what the future holds because there's so many. And we don't even know what the future holds because there's so many factors that we don't have control of. But I have such confidence in the staff, the faculty, the care for the students and your ability to respond to the needs of the students and our community. And that's what you've done, you've responded in a way that actually if someone had been able to show us this, a crystal ball two years ago, we would have, we would have probably all run out the other way. Because we wouldn't have anticipated or believed that we had it, had the ability to do what we're doing. So thank you for caring for our students, for caring for their wellbeing. Thank you for being who you are. And yes, do let the staff know how deeply the board appreciates them. And how much we, as a board, we understand our lane, but we want to be in support of the faculty and the work being done with students as much as we can. So thank you so much, all of you and all of the faculty as well.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you all for putting wellbeing of our students and adults as a top priority. Thank you, Board, for making it a goal, but also thank you for recognizing that a whole lot more has been demanded of this during this pandemic. And it's not unique to ETHS. We know that people all over this country are having struggles and struggling with their own emotional and their own mental health wellbeing during a pandemic that has just turned this country upside down. And Taya, thank you for referencing just some of the stressors that are on people today because of the pandemic. So it's hugely important to ETHS. And it's more hugely important today than it's ever been, but it's not unique to ETHS. It is a societal concern that we simply have had thrust upon us because of this pandemic. We have more to share with you about our e-learning. And I'm going to pivot a little bit here to talk a little bit then about our pre-implementation planning where we are getting far more detailed in our planning for our hybrid model. Because we know that we will be moving towards that sometime yet this semester. Then we had already announced that and as we monitor conditions, we will continue to make sure that we're ready to go. One big part of that is being ready with our facilities. And we have two pros here tonight. We have Clarence Gregory, anybody who's been affiliated with ETHS for the last 30 or so years knows that Clarence Gregory is an icon in this school. He directs all of our operations, our custodial and engineering, maintenance, all of those aspects come under his responsibility. And he himself is an engineer, which really brings a lot of expertise. And then just the other thing is, there is not one square inch of this school, either above ground or below ground, that Clarence Gregory doesn't know. This is the man who knows every square inch of ETHS. I don't care if it's the corner of a roof, if it's the end of a pipe, or it's the bottom of a tunnel. Clarence Gregory is the man. And he's joined by Associate Principal Robbie Brown. Robbie is our administrator responsible for facilities and works closely with Clarence and his team. And I'm going to turn it over to them. There's a lot of talk about having facilities ready to be healthy environments when people do return in the midst of a deadly virus. So what, Robbie, are you going to kick it off? All right, Robbie Brown.
Hi, and good evening, everyone. And I'm pleased to be able to come before the board this evening to talk a little bit about the great work of the Operations Department. Eric, you took some of my introduction of Mr. Gregory there, but I certainly second every.
We can't hear it enough.
Yes, so I'm very lucky in my position that I get to work with the Operations Department. And Mr. Gregory, our Director of Operations, and Mr. Eddie Dunlap, our Assistant Director of Operations. And I am just so pleased every day to work alongside them for ETHS. What I'm going to talk a little bit about tonight is what Dr. Witherspoon said with some pre-planning for some implementation of in-person learning. But truthfully, this has been going on for quite a while now. Ever since the pandemic hit, you know, there are still some folks that work in the building, operations among them that have been here all along. So thank you to them. But we've been upgrading our cleaning and our PPE and our ventilation systems all along for the folks that are here and in preparation for what we do, for what we are expecting for the in-person learning. So I'm going to cover about four main topics this evening. And then Clarence, if you need, want to add in on anything, please feel free to do that. But I'll speak about four main topics. They are cleaning, the cleaning of the school, PPE, our heating, ventilation, air conditioning, the HVAC system of the school. And then just facilities, changes that we've made in preparation for some in-person learning that is hopefully coming this semester. So I'm going to start with cleaning protocols that have happened. If you, we all know at ETHS, our school, even pre-pandemic, was extremely clean and extremely beautiful at all times. And that is still true now, but the Operations Department has even enhanced what they do for cleaning of the school. All areas of the school are being cleaned and sanitized at least once daily. So that would be the offices and classrooms that are being used. And our high-touch areas, like handrails and doorknobs and bathrooms, are all being sanitized and cleaned at least three times every single day. And that is happening now, right as we help the folks that are working in the building right now and will continue when in-person happens. We, so that's our cleaning protocols. For PPE, everyone is required to wear a mask inside the school and that is being enforced. And people are doing that. We would have extra masks available for anybody that needs that, we do have that. We do also, we'll be providing each classroom and office with some PPE, like hand sanitizer, wipes, paper towels and cleaning solutions. So all of that will be a part of what's available to, for our staff and students to use in the classrooms. We will also be having the Plexiglas barrier between the teacher station and the classroom. So those were, are in process of collaborating with the IIT department to install the Plexiglas barriers between the teacher station and the rest of the classroom. And we are also installing many hand sanitizer manual pumps on the walls of the school. So we've had those around the school, but we're increasing the numbers of those in our hallways throughout the school so that you won't walk very many steps in the school without finding another place that you can get sanitizer as. For HVAC system, the first thing is, is we are updating all of the filters into the school to a MERV-13 rating. And that is the rating as recommended by the IDPH. So the filters in the school and our locations, like the Transition House and the Day School, all of this counts for that as well, are being upgraded to the MERV-13 rated filters. Our Operations Department starts our HVAC system really early, at least two hours before most, almost anyone comes into the building to get the ventilation system working. So that's run very early before the building becomes occupied. And then, of course, it runs all day and then we are leaving it to run later into the evening and into the night as well. To, just to continue to filter the air that is within the school of ETHS or satellite locations. We are also using as much outside air as possible into the filter system and into the HVAC system. And that's a delicate balance on, in a lot of ways, because especially as it's colder outside, we can't draw too much cold air into the system. So our engineers are doing a daily calculation of how much fresh air, outside air can be brought into our HVAC system. All of our rooms have the filter air supply, even rooms without windows to have filtered air supply. And they also have a return vent as well to keep the air moving within all of the classrooms and rooms here at ETHS. We are encouraging folks, as needed, to crack a window, just to continue to get fresh air into the building as much as possible. So, but then it's very important that staff remember to close those windows at the end of the day before they leave as well. And we're also following all the air exchange recommendations for our music and dance classes. So singing, musical instrument and dance classes. There are specific IDPH recommendations for air exchange and how long students, the room needs to be empty for the air in the room to completely turn over at least three times before the next group comes in for those special situation classes. Our last topic is the buildings, what we've done to update the building. Now, all of our classrooms are already set up with our desks at least six feet apart in all directions. So the student desks in the classrooms are, have already been updated in that manner. And student, the desks are in rows and columns for, to encourage and keep social distancing as students are in class. We're going to be installing wall and floor signing as we prepare for the in-person, just to encourage things like mask wearing and social distancing throughout the school and keep moving and stand here Xs for desks and those types of things. So all of that will be coming as well to ETHS. And our hallways, we are going to use some cones and a flag system to, down the middle of the hallways, just to encourage that folks keep to the right and keep moving on the right-hand side of the hallway. So that is the quick overview of how we are preparing for to welcome students and staff back into the school for in-person learning. Mr. Gregory, what, do you have anything else to add before we ask the board for questions? Or anything that I missed that you would like to talk about at this time?
Okay, here we go. Robbie did a good job. I'm proud of you, Robbie.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
We also, I use a company called Airways Cleaning System. That's a company out of Roseville, Illinois. They come out and actually service my supplier return units. They, just like you call it mirror maids, but these guys are the mirror maids of a pretty big 50, 50, 50, oh, 50,000 CFM fans. You know, we have 60-horse motors. They set everything down, they clean the entire plenum system, the fan, the squirrel cage, replace the belts. We replace the filters, it's cheaper for us to purchase the filters. So we're in the process of also supply units that do not have the carriage for the supplied filters. We had a company come out and a manufacturer of one filter system, but now Rudy and the guys, we kind of stole their idea. We're making up our own cages to hold the filters, but we still have like nine, 10 more filters. Nine or 10 more fan units to put those filters in. But then those are the MERV-13 filters, so. Well, it'll be ready. If you guys say school opens up in February, March, it's no problem, it'll be ready. The school has a natural draft too. I don't know if you get, board members probably noticed that in the winter time when you buy the fireplaces. So we're always moving air in the building. We don't have a building like the Thompson Center, which is always a sick building. Because we always have moving air throughout ETHS, no matter what. You have the natural draft towards the pool, towards the fieldhouse, so ETHS is always moving the air. But when it gets cold out, we don't want zero degree air, you know, going across my coils. Then Mary would then will be upset with me because we have frozen coils, we can't spend money. So we don't want to do that. And I'll take any questions, but Robbie answered most of them. We're good?
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. I appreciate all that additional information.
And Clarence, that's nine to go because we have a total of 60? How many?
About 60 fans, but, you know, I forgot the ones in the, in the photo lab. See, there's two little small fans up in the ceiling as I was walking around, so we got to get those too. And if you walk around, you'll always find something else. You know, the photo lab has two small fans up in the darkroom. Unless you go in there, you wouldn't know their fans were up in there.
Thank you, Clarence.
Okay.
Wow.
I just have to say that I have no background that would allow me to weigh in on what you guys have been up to. Other than to know that fresh air is critical, air circulation is critical. And you both sound like you know what you're doing, the air is moving, you're making progress, you're doing it in a, what sounds like remarkably cost-effective way and with enthusiasm and all due speed. So I'm not sure we could ask for anything more. Thank you very much.
You're always welcome to come take a tour with me.
Well, you know what, no offense, but I'm still keeping my distance.
No, I mean, when this is all over with, when this is all over.
When it's over, I would love that. I think it would, I think that would be terrific. I really do appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would add, I probably know more than I want to know about running a building. And this has all the boxes checked in terms of what you're able and what you should be doing. And, you know, you thought of things like crowd flow. And there's never enough hand sanitizers, Robbie, so you're absolutely right. It's like, I was like, put them here, put them there, there's another one, you know, and so, and they become part of the culture. You know, you're creating a culture of cleanliness. I will say that ETHS is the model when it comes to maintaining a clean building that is older than the YMCA. And so, you know, the perception is old, is not clean. But it's just because we got a lot of grace that we're dealing with. And so when you come into ETHS, you see how clean the building is. And I know what this process with, with this pandemic has done for at least the YMCA. We've become even more cleaner. So we've created a different level of cleanliness. And it sounds like there's a difference between regular cleaning and cleaning for an infectious environment, which it sounds very much like that's what you're doing. You know, there's basic cleaning and then there's preparing for this virus, which is totally different. And it, you know, to me, it sounds, and I don't know more than, I don't know anything more than you know, Mr. Gregory, but it definitely sounds very familiar to what I do know. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say that it seems interesting that after, I don't know, 100 and whatever number of years, that horribly cold and windy hallway down to the athletic department now has a purpose. So there's always something we learn, right? But in seriousness, just thank. But in seriousness, just thank you because we know how hard you're working and and just what it means to be ready for the students to come back and the level of detail and attention that you all are doing to every level of staying in touch and understanding what the rules are and applying those rules and going above and beyond is just terrific. So I have every every bit of faith that when we get to a point where we can let students back in the building, we will be more than ready. So thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
So I echo all of that as well. I know I know what it takes to to or what it looks like when these buildings have been prepared and all of the planning and the thought and the distancing and how it really does set up the culture that we will have when when we're ready to bring students back. It's going to be, as I've heard heard you say so many times, administration, very, very different. And you will have established that difference. Things will feel different, look different. And it should because safety is the most important thing. We're not bringing students back until we are ready to make sure as best we can, of course, we're never one hundred percent certain, but as best we can, that students will be safe in the building. So I just appreciate all the work and the planning and the conversations that you're having with each other and with other members of the team to try to figure all of this out. As well as conversations that you're having with other schools and districts that have been doing this to kind of understand and be ready and get ready. So I know you're talking to your counterparts. And that's really helpful and important. And you're learning from them. And they're happily sharing with you ideas and what lessons they learned is on the path to readying a building for this type of transition. So thank you.
And may I state that the school has also purchased six of those disinfectant machines. We have two on order, two you can carry, just like your spray gun in your yard at home and two you can put on your back. And the guys, we have three shifts. So the guys that get there at six in the morning, try to make it nice for, you know, Marion and Dr. Weather spoon to come in door exit one and two. And then when we open up door three, it'll be down there at six in the morning. They fog the space before any staff comes in. Then it's at night before the guys go home at eleven thirty. So we we do it a few times. So you see people walk around with the little container on his back. It's not going to hurt anyone, but that's what he's doing before and after the public leaves the building. And that's for every area in the building. Classrooms, we also use them. The guys mask up. They look like you know, something from one of Star War movies. But it works. And Mary, we thank you for your helping getting us all this product. So we couldn't do it up, Mary. All right. Okay.
Thank you, Clarence. Hopefully we'll get some FEMA money one of these days.
One of these days. But I also appreciate working with all you administrators and board members. It's cool. You you don't mind working when you see others working. It's a team effort. And Dr. West point, he knows he's my guy, but I don't say much to him. But you can walk past his uh, his door Monday morning, Friday morning. It's sneaking there on weekends. I think a brother don't see him. He's always there, you know? He's always here. And that's amazing because he has a life, he has a family. You know, but he's always in the building, trying to make sure the building is a, he's leading by example. So it's easy to work for a man like that. Seriously. Okay, I'm all done though, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Clarence.
Clarence and Robbie, thank you so much. I I'm always completely reassured because I I have so many daily reminders about what you're doing. But I'm so glad you can share this with the board and at a public meeting. So people realize how much our team and our folks and you are on top of this. So thank you. The next part that I'd like to to bring the board up to date on in in terms of our pandemic work is on the area of curriculum instruction. And so Dr. Pete Davis is here. Okay, yeah, take care. Dr. Pete Davis, who is our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, is here. We've started second semester. We're already into the second week of second semester. And so Pete, you want to just bring us up to a little date, a little bit about where we are on the curricular and instructional aspects?
I'll give you a brief update. Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. And you know, I I know he left, I think. But thank you, Mr. Gregory and Mr. Brown, and thanks to your team for all the work you do. The school looks different now and it sure will look different in the near, in the very near future and in the future going forward. Look, we know it's difficult. You know, we know that hybrid learning does not meet the standards of normal, full, in-person instruction. That's the biggest challenge. It's the biggest challenge for our teachers to reconcile that because should we, you know, when we go to this hybrid model, our teachers reflexively, their mental model for this is full in-person instruction. And that's complicated because seventy-five percent of the students will be remote at any given time in that classroom. You know, we're going to adhere to all of the social distancing protocols that IDPH has put out there and that, you know, Mr. Gregory has set up in our classrooms. We'll have, you know, the desks again will be spaced correctly. Seats will be assigned and strictly enforced. That that's for contact tracing. The days of kids moving around in a classroom, sitting where they want, those are gone in the in the near future. Because because of the contact tracing piece. I think the other significant change is the use of masks in the classroom. And when our teachers are teaching in the classroom, we're gonna, you know, we're looking at a model where that's worked in other districts, which is and I used work loosely, but it's remote in-person instruction. But the teacher will be zooming from their classroom. But the challenge, I think we're all used to zooming like this. In the remote class, in the hybrid classroom, there'll be, you know, five or six students in the classroom, socially distanced, assigned seats. But the teacher will be wearing a mask like this and teaching the class on a Zoom and with the students in front of them. This is going to be a challenge for our students at home. That's why we're investing in, you know, some technology down the road that'll that'll have, you know, some, we're going to have to look at microphones and things like that because this is going to make it difficult. It's difficult already on Zoom to read social cues. It's going to be even more difficult when the teacher has a masks mask on and is doing that in the classroom. That's a significant change. That's something I didn't think about until we sat in on planning. And it came up that they that the, I knew you'd have to wear a mask, but I didn't, it didn't connect that you would be zooming to seventy-five percent of your students wearing one. And that's something our teachers haven't done to date. They they zoom just like we're zooming right here. You know, we also know that districts who've utilized this hybrid learning piece, we've we're learning from them all the time, you know, in my communications. Want to also acknowledge that there is some social value in bringing students into the building. But we have to remember that we're bringing them into the hybrid to keep them apart because of the pandemic. So there's, that's a challenge again for teachers who really, really, really want to connect with their students. They really want to do that, you know, make that connection count. They really want to work on that. All of the old ways of doing things in a full in-person classroom won't work given these constraints. So we have to relearn how to do those things in much the same way we've relearned how to do these things in the in the in the remote environment. The hybrid environment is different yet again. And it's a step. And it's a critical step, I think, to getting to full in-person instruction. So there's value in that as well as a transitional step. But as a, as an upgrade, if we're thinking this as an instructional upgrade, I'm going to tell you that it's going to be an instructional challenge. And I just want everyone to be, if you're listening out there, to be patient as we implement this, to understand that we may not be able to cover the amount of material we typically would cover because it's a new delivery model. And we have to pay attention. What we're hearing is you have to pay attention to the students in front of you. But you also have to monitor the students online at the same time. There's no way around it. But we're committed. We're we're committed. We have an awesome team of teachers. We've talked about them tonight. They're extraordinarily adaptable. We have an amazing tech team. David Chan and his team are incredible. They put together the modules that we used over the summer to train our teachers so that they could go and implement enhanced e-learning. Well, guess what? David and his team, aside from providing day-to-day support to to our teachers this semester, they are also developing professional development in preparation for the hybrid. We are, we are, we are very blessed and we are extraordinarily fortunate to have them on our team because they understand instruction and they understand the difference in these models and they can connect it for our teachers. Again, you're going to learn in the coming board meetings, we'll talk about, you know, our our tech plans and and things like that. But I just want to know that, you know, instructional, we're starting to wrap our heads around this. We're be thoughtful. We're going to be intentional. And and that's the, and we're not going to, you know, one of the things is, you know, so so where are you in the planning? We want to have all of the planning, you know, in a very quick clip because we want to, because that will put our teachers' minds at ease in terms of like, okay, I'm familiarizing myself with what this is going to look like. I'm doing the professional development. We also have two remote learning planning days that we can schedule where we can have teachers engage in that in that type of type of training and that type of planning. So all of that is to say that it's a necessary step. And we're we're going to rise to the challenge, but I want to acknowledge upfront that this is going to be challenging. It's going to be disruptive. And for our students, it's not going to feel the same. It's going to feel very, very different. That's my update. I I just really appreciated, you know, Mr. Gregory and Mr. Brown's update because that helped paint the picture, I think, of what the school is going to look like when when students come back.
So Pete, thank you. I'm just going to say a a few other remarks and and then any other questions or comments that we might have from the board. First of all, clearly, we know this COVID nineteen, this pandemic is really a public health crisis. And so we are relying on what the public health experts tell us. And 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 our sources, clearly, we are checking out the CDC constantly, literally daily and 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 sometimes more than daily. There the the materials and and the research they publish, and that is just abundant. And and we're we're constantly monitoring and keeping track of that more locally. We keep track of what the Cook County Department of Public Health and 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 the Chicago Department of Public Health are putting out. They have a lot of online information. They have dashboards. We monitor them all. And we're very particularly interested in the Illinois Department of Public Health. They have really been giving the guidance, very direct guidance to school districts. And 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 we we are monitoring daily their dashboard and what we're learning about the pandemic here in Illinois, here in Cook County, here in Chicagoland area. And then specifically, what's called Region Ten. The governor established eleven COVID regions around the state. The public health officials, you know, determined that 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 in a region, you can get a pretty good idea about the positivity, about the number of cases, about the the hospitalizations and the like. And and so we are watching Region Ten. And right now, Region Ten is hovering at about a ten percent and 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 a little higher positivity rate. We know that it's been identified that anything at eight percent or higher positivity rate is considered to be substantial risk. We're looking for that to go below eight percent. And it hasn't. But but that will be a key indicator for us that that we've moved into a moderate risk situation. Once we've fall between, Region Ten falls between below eight percent. And 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 that's when we're going to be able to really look at all the other factors. We, you know, it won't take forever by any means, but we'll look at hospitalizations, available capacity. We'll look, look at at cases positivity as well as test positivity. We'll look at death rates. We'll look at ICU beds available. But again, all of this is on a database. So you know, it will be able to get a good look at it in a in a very rapid way. So as soon as we see Region Ten fall from the substantial risk into the moderate risk, we know that 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 we can now start looking to make some movement toward and towards our hybrid model here at ETHS. But we will take all the things that we've been talking about tonight into account, the readiness of the building. And by the way, we'll have it ready, the readiness of our delivery system, our technology and all of that. And by the way, we'll have that ready. And just quite frankly, what else we know about the the safety factors that are going to be huge? We are simply not going to take high risks with lives. Period. We're not going to do it. First of all, we're responsible for the the decision and we're not going to be frivolous about it. But also, we are, we hold responsibility. And when that decision is made, we can't in any way toss it off onto somebody else. We can't abdicate it. We can't say, well, you know, we were told whatever. No, because in the end, we're talking about life and death here. And it's for all of our thirty-eight hundred students. It's for our six hundred employees. It's for the families of all of these people who who are in the homes from which they come and to which they return every day. And and we know that we we can simply not be risky here. Our remote learning is working well. Students are getting an education. You saw our attendance rates that were put up on the screen a little bit earlier. Those are comparable to, and in many cases, better than we have on a normal school year. Because quite frankly, you probably saw the national news, there's a far lower instance of influenza. The flu is not going around the same way because people aren't in the same environments and and and, you know, schools are incubators of of colds and flu. But because we haven't had that, those numbers are are down. So actually, our attendance rate is is doing quite well. Our students are attending school, our teachers are 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 handling classes and learning is going on. We don't have to take high risk. But we will, as soon as we can, implement that hybrid model because we know that there are other benefits, even though it's not the best model. Thank you, Pete, for pointing that out. It's 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 really not the best model. But we we can't possibly bring over four thousand people into this building at the same time. We're not going to do that. So our only other option, if not remote, is to do some transfer transitioning to some level of a hybrid model. And that would really be our our next opportunity. We are, as I think all Americans, excited that there is a vaccine now available. You know, it it it's disappointing that I guess the way they worded is getting it into people's arms seems to be the challenge right now in our country. I saw today that President Biden, and I'm going to just how President Biden has indicated.
Eric, you're on mute. You've been jumping, you jumped to mute.
I, my hands are here. I didn't even touch my computer. That's a little I mean, I'm I'm sitting here and You'll have to tell me if that happens because there's some gremlin here. But anyway, so President Biden is going to be announcing Thursday a sweeping vaccination plan. He's already indicated 100 million vaccinations in 100 days. I am very hopeful that we're going to see the actual vaccinating of people, not simply the production and deployment of the vaccine, really revving up rapidly. I've been in touch with the Department of Health here in Evanston. And I've also been in touch with the Cook County Department of Health. I've indicated to them that we would, we would volunteer to be and would, would hope to be a vaccination site where people who are in Phase 1B, which includes essential workers, which includes educators, could be vaccinated right here at ETHS. When asked by them, would you be willing to have educators from, from other neighboring areas come? I said absolutely. And I said absolutely because if they see that it's a site that will serve more people, maybe that will even be more of an impetus that they would be willing to make us one of the vaccination sites. But we will cooperate with that in any way we can. And finally, I'll remind everybody that as soon as we can see our way clear, I've already pledged that we'll give a 30-day notice when we're going to go to hybrid. That's so people can make arrangements in their own lives. We have some students who have jobs, for example, that they would, would have to arrange. We have staff members who have childcare issues. We have families that if we go back and the young ones are still at home, that could be an issue. So we will give a 30-day notice as soon as we see our way clear. And we will be ready for a hybrid model when it is not 100% as I think Ty and maybe you said. But maybe not, no 100% guarantee, but where we're not in a moment in time of substantial risk. And board, that concludes our report.
Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. Thank you so much for that information. This has really been a really, I think, thorough report. I appreciate the parts and the information. Very good. Any, any board members have other questions or comments you'd like to share? Okay, once again, thank you. And I appreciate, I really appreciate these updates at, at each board meeting because there's always much to think about. And certainly, as we plan to make this transition, there will be more for us to plan and think about and questions and, and just, just a lot. So, thank you. All right. Okay, so let's move on. Our next item is a celebration, actually. Very cool. So we are celebrating the Popular Annual Financial Report Award for fiscal year 2019. The Governor, the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2019. This is wonderful. You're on mute, Eric.
What's going, I do not know what's going on with this. You'll just have to keep them on. I don't know why it just keeps, I Zoom all day long. And now all of a sudden tonight, it keeps toggling itself back and forth. With that said, let me begin by saying that the first award that I want to highlight is the CAFR Award. As you said, President Savage Williams, it's the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. And this would be for the most recent year it's been awarded, FY19. Let me just tell you a little bit about this award because this is no small accomplishment. The Government Finance Officers Association Award gives this award and we have now earned it for the 11th consecutive year. And it is in fact for excellence in financial reporting that meets and exceeds all of the standards of financial reporting and accountability. Let me tell you how rare this award is. Out of over 800 school districts in Illinois, 25 have received this award this year. Out of the whole nation, out of the 13,506 school districts in the nation, only 542 have received this award this year. This is a big deal. And the fact that we have now garnered this award for 11 straight years, I think, is really a reminder of this board stewardship over the finances of this school district because ultimately, this falls to the board. That, you know, if you look at what the role and responsibility of board, financial stewardship is the top of the list. And I think we, as a school district and as a community, can feel very pleased, confident, and actually brag a little that, that we have been, received this award again. But I'm not quite done because we received another award. And actually, this is an award that we have won before too. But let me talk a little bit about this and then it's going to lead into Mary Rodino's presentation tonight, which is the next item on the agenda. This is the Popular Annual Financial Report Award. And it too is for the most recent fiscal year, FY19. And let me share about this award. The Government Finance Office Association awards this one for outstanding achievement in a popular annual financial reporting. This is basically, how are you reporting to your community? How are you being transparent about your finances? So one is, are you doing it well? And we're one of 25 districts in all of Illinois to win the award. And now this one is, are you doing a good job of reporting and being transparent and making sure that your community has information? And, and, and we have been awarded for that. So listen. 30 school districts in the country receive this award. I'll repeat that. We are one of 30 districts in the country to receive this popular annual.
You're muted again, Eric.
Wow, this is irritating. So, so anyway, 34 last year. It's down to 30 out of the whole country that have won this recognition for their popular annual financial reporting. And ETHS has indeed won this award. And this is the eighth straight year for this. And actually, we determined eight years ago that we wanted to step up to this level. We did. And we've been, won this award every year since we started, since we created and started distributing this report. And Mary will be telling us more about it in the next item. But yeah, lots to celebrate. To our finance department, to our board, to the, to everybody who makes our budgeting and finance work because everybody has to be part of administering a budget. I just say thank you all and congratulations.
Thanks, Eric. And I will tell you, I mentioned this in the few slides I'm going to show you about this year's popular report. But a lot of you probably also know that report as the ETHS Digest because that's what we send around to the households in Evanston. So I do refer to it by its technical name, but I should mention more that, that the public really knows it as the ETHS Digest. And, you know, that's an attempt to really make it more appealing to our constituents because not too many people want to read something called a financial report anyway. But as, as the board knows, you know, our, our normal financial report, the CAFR, is about 150 pages, so no one really wants to read that thing. But, but the Popular Annual Financial Report is not just financials. It's financials in a much easier to understand format. Some of the titles of the pages include where does the money come from? Where does the money go? So it's really much more user-friendly. And then it's also full of a lot of articles and accomplishments, thanks to Kathy Mills. She not only writes those articles, she does keep me on task every fall for making sure that we get the financial pieces done in order to get this document done on time. So coincidentally, the way that this falls, we bring you the award for last year, which we've had. We received it, I would say, maybe two months ago. But, but by the time we were able to work it into the agenda, we were ready to present you with the newest document. So in the packet you received last week, board, there was a printed copy of this document, the ETHS Digest. We usually do kind of a slick, fancier printing. But one of the first things I wanted to tell you, and this is in the board memo, is that for a couple of reasons, this, this year, at least at this time, we are not sending this out to all the households in Evanston. It's not a requirement of the award program. It is something we like to do. But every year, we do get a few calls to say, hey, I don't really like the paper. Could I opt out? Could I get an electronic version? And in addition, when we were looking for some cost savings due to a lot of the COVID uncertainty, we definitely thought that we could digitize and promote this edition on the district's website and social media. And so we'll be working to make sure that we get that out. It's already on the website. It's a, you have to navigate a little to find it. So we'll make sure that we get that a little more front and center for the immediate future and then also get it onto our social media with some links. So I am going to share my screen, just go through a few slides. And then if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take those. Okay, you can all see that, right? So as I mentioned, this is what we refer to as ETHS Digest, but it is also technically known as the Popular Annual Financial Report. And, there we go. It is a document that, as we mentioned, is intended to really convey the results of our operations to our stakeholders. And it's specifically designed for people who don't necessarily have a background in public finance. And I will tell you, I'm, I'm not going to say that only a handful of districts could ever earn this award. That's not true. But districts have to have the, the ability to present clear financial information with trend information over time. And they, they have to really make the effort to produce this document and then produce it in a way that conforms to the standards by the Professional Government Finance Officers Organization in order to do that. And to be honest, a lot of districts don't take the time. And sometimes it's because they don't have positive information that they really want to relay. So I'm not going to say that more districts couldn't do it, but for, for whatever reason, either they're doing it and it's not up to the standards or they're just not taking the time to do it. And that's why a lot of, more districts don't get this award. So it's basically an overview of financial and other highlights from the district's year. As I mentioned, not only does it have financial information, but it has other ETHS accomplishments and events and things that are going on throughout the district. Some of our visuals include enrollment numbers, goals, board goals, budget strategy, the revenue and expense highlights, and then events and awards of the past year. It summarizes our CAFR or Consolidated Annual, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report in an easy-to-read format. So it really just hits the highlights and the information that's important to our stakeholders. We do have charts and graphs, which we added more of in the last couple of years due to a request by the, the board that gives the award for this. It's judged by some of our peers. And they did request more visually appealing information that also gave financial info. We, as I mentioned, have highlights and then we also always discuss budget challenges. In the revenue highlights, we have an article, where does the money come from? Talks about the main funding sources, including property taxes and an explanation. And it also talks about important concepts like property tax caps, the evidence-based funding for the state, which is still only about three years old now, and also federal aid, state categorical aid. And then this year, we also added in some uncertainties due to COVID, certainly revenue uncertainties. And then our expense highlights are where does the money go? This includes some of the main sources of our expenses, which the board is familiar with, but maybe not so much our stakeholders, about how much money we have to spend on salaries and benefits. And then other categories like our purchase services, supplies, capital outlay and tuition to outside schools. Some of the programs and awards that were highlighted this year included ETHS National Rankings, which thankfully, we can highlight every year. Remote learning and, and how that got up and running very quickly. And also Black Lives Matter initiatives. There, I, I'm sure you've all seen the, the cover of this document. I thought it was a really amazing aerial shot of what Dodge Avenue looked like, looked like after the basketball team painted the Black Lives Matter on the roadway. And then it also talked about the city naming Dodge Avenue as Black Lives Matter Way for the next number of years. It also, we had an article about a protest march that I think was in the spring or early summer, off the top of my head. I don't recall that date, but I believe it was early summer. So we had an article about that. And that was kind of in conjunction with the Black Lives Matter initiatives. We also talked about providing food during the pandemic, particularly the early parts of the pandemic, spring leading into summer. And then Ty had mentioned this earlier, but the wellness resources that were available to students and staff and families during the pandemic. And then some foundation updates were also included in the programs and informational items. And that's really all I had. Just wanted to kind of walk you through that document. Hope you found it useful. We, we hope that our stakeholders do as well. And I don't know if you have any questions or anything.
Thank you, Mary. Once again, very clear, very easy to understand. I love that digest. I think it's, it's really, it's good. I look forward to getting it and, and reading it. The articles are, are good. And, and just another way to help us understand the school. I think it's brilliant to go electronic with that. I think that's, I have no problem. That might be one of those COVID changes that we always do. So.
I think maybe what we could think about for next year is staying electronic. But, you know, somehow getting the word out that we have printed copies that we'd be happy to mail to people if they'd like one. Yeah, I'd love to do that.
Yeah.
When you said you loved this document, I was just going to say, you know, no offense to Kendra, who the board knows is really in charge of our CAFR now. I used to do it, I had a love-hate relationship with it for many years. But I much prefer this document because it's, it's much more interesting and concise. So they both have their purpose, but I, I, I think this one's much easier to understand.
Yes, yes, it is. All right, I'll open it up to board for questions, comments, board?
Well, I just want to say, as always, thank you to Mary and her team. And I do think it's so important for us to be really transparent and clear with the community in a way that people can understand. And I think most people think about finances and sort of say, oh, not my thing. But this document is so approachable and easy to read. And as Pat said, the articles are interesting and the linkage between budget and the moral decisions that go into that budget and then how we, how we work with our students and, and support our, our students and our, the education they receive. So it's just a great thing. And, you know, we always tease you, Mary, but we are so, so grateful for the hard work that you do. And Eric started by thanking the board, but really, it goes to you guys for all the hard work that you do to keep. for all the hard work that you do, um, to keep such a, you're just such great stewards of, uh, the public's money and, and still go above and beyond in what we offer our students. So it's, it's really just super grateful, um, to Mary, to her team, and to all the folks that really work hard to make sure that our, our budget is where it needs to be and our finances are, are where they need to be. So as always, Mary, thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Appreciate your support, support of the board.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mary. And we are going to move on with our agenda. We're at comments from the public. Dr. Davis, I think you have a few things that you'd like to read to us.
Yes, thank you. Uh, thank you. Uh, we have seven comments from the public. They were all entered via email. I will read those into the record. Uh, the first public comment is from Laurel O'Sullivan. "I am an Evanston resident and deeply concerned parent of an 11th grade student at ETHS and the mother of two recent graduates, class of 2019 and class of 2020. I am writing to implore you to begin a public discussion of a plan for reopening Evanston schools. Nationwide, we see more and more states and municipalities setting reopening dates. Just this week, Michigan's governor announced her plans to reopen schools by March 1st. All around us, both regionally and nationally, schools are finding ways to return to school safely. It is no longer acceptable for District 202 to remain silent on its plans. At this point, the plan that was shared last July and then rescinded is out of date and there has been no further information shared with parents. Parents in Evanston, including doctors, mental health professionals, are organizing and coming together because the cost of all students in Evanston is grave. My own son is losing interest in his class, feeling extremely disconnected from his peers and growing increasingly apathetic. At a time when 16-year-olds should be looking forward to the future, he is having an extremely hard time even connecting to the concept of life after high school because he doesn't feel like he is in high school. It's hard to fathom the permanent consequences that spending a year or more of a critical developmental time out of school will have on my son and all other Evanston teens. Shortly before winter break, this math teacher emailed me of some declining grades and her concerns about online school taking a toll on his ability to absorb the increasingly complex subject matter, which she was witnessing with many of her students. Compared to many of our families, my son has been doing fine academically, but it's social emotional detachment that is taking the real toll on him and all of his peers in Evanston. It's hard to explain to him why Evanston refuses to open when increasing number of schools locally, regionally, and nationally are opening or announcing plans to do so. And that they are not, uh, are engaging with parents and discussing publicly a plan for doing so. Physical and mental health professionals in Evanston have sounded the alarm bell as to the devastating impact of prolonged school closures are having on our children. In December, Dr. Val Kimball sent a letter to the board outlining those concerns in detail. Her letter caught the attention of increasing hundreds of parents who are saddened, outraged, and shocked by the board's continued silence on the matter. All around us, we hear daily about escalating number of Evanston teens drinking, doing drugs, being hospitalized, having panic attacks, being diagnosed with depression. None of this is surprising, given the clear data from, uh, daily, uh, coming out daily from national health experts on the irreparable consequences of keeping schools closed. Perhaps most significantly, I worry about the families in our community that do not have the same choice that my family and others have. It is the at-risk black and brown families that are bearing the burden of the school shutdown. There is also overwhelming support by the data and the science. To be clear, keeping schools closed is not equitable. It's shocking to me that in a community, uh, and a school that prides itself on serving all students, accommodations are not being made for those that are, that need it the most. The school remains locked and sealed like a fortress. In fa- in the face of the reversal of trends we are seeing from other public leaders, the overwhelming data, the evidence in the mental health professional doctors are sharing daily. I am asking the Board of Education to answer the following questions and consider the following actions. One, what efforts have been made to update and revise the now outdated fall reopening plan that was presented last summer to reflect more accurately all that we know about COVID-19? Specifically, please share all metrics and other details, which is critical and absolutely vital for transparency and restoring trust in the District 202 leadership. Having another live town hall meeting to update all parents about District 202's reopening plan and answer questions posed by parents and guardians. Will you commit to this? Three, please re-instill parents' confidence by sharing the via email and updated list of which medical professionals the district is currently consulting with to prepare for reopening in light of what we have subsequently learned about COVID-19. As of last summer, it appears based on PowerPoint presentation shared with the board, that the school nurse was the only public health official invited to participate despite ongoing expressed interest from other physicians. Is this still the case? Has the board already assembled a medical advisory board to guide its efforts to ensure compliance and alignment with the most accurate science and public health information? If not, when will it do so? Reopening a school is a complex matter and surely having the benefit of esteemed doctors who are also parents and community residents is desired by the board. Four, I'm requesting the board publicly commit to a proposed reopening date and begin an ongoing transparent and active dialogue with all interested parents of District 202 students to ensure this happens in a safe and equitable manner. It is imperative that you, Dr. Witherspoon and Principal Campbell, fulfill your respective roles to accurately guide the community of parents and students toward a reopening date. Ongoing silence and inaction is not leadership. It is during difficult times such as these that we become more and that leadership becomes more important to communicate frequently, uh, with more detailed transparency than has been the case. Please reinstate my faith that it's still a great day to be a Wildkit. Thanks for your attention. I look forward to your response. Sincerely, Laurel O'Sullivan. The second public comment is from Susan Feltz. Uh, Happy New Year. I hope that you both had a restful break. I'm writing to you today as a resident of Evanston, uh, and as a parent of juniors at ETHS. I'm writing to you because I'm going more and more concerned about the well-being of our kids in our community and specifically the impact of prolonged school closures and e-learning on our kids. Physicians, nurses, and mental health professionals in Evanston are sounding alarms at the crisis unfolding in front of their eyes. In their presence, in fact, Dr. Kimball submitted a letter to the District 202 board uh, that was read into the record at the last meeting in December. She si- she signaled grave concerns for Evanston children, including our teens. Kids are suffering, their parents are suffering. This cannot be ignored or denied. Evanston parents, like my husband and I, were not surprised to hear what Dr. Kimball had to say as we are witnessing the negative impact of prolonged e-learning on our children and hearing from our friends and neighbors how much their kids are struggling. Like many Evanston parents of high schoolers, we are terrified about the mental health consequences of lockdowns, closed schools for our teenagers. We are hearing of more and more Evanston teens drinking, doing drugs, being hospitalized, having panic attacks, being diagnosed with depression, even expressing so- so- social, I'm sorry, suicidal ideation and harming themselves. These issues seem to be escalating. And again, this is not surprising, given the clear data coming out almost daily on the consequence of prolonged school closures. You surely agree that this is terrifying. While I recognize the immense privilege our family has, uh, having contracted and healed from COVID-19, being able to work from home and not suffering, uh, job loss, I worry about those families in our community that are less fortunate. It is our at-risk families, especially our black and brown families, that are bearing the burden of these lockdowns and shutdowns as they have always borne an unfair and incomprehensible proportion of the burdens of our community. Overwhelmingly, the data and science show this to be true as well and must be acknowledged. I'm emailing you specifically to ask you the following questions. How has ETHS return to school plan for 2021, uh, school year changed since this summer to accommodate all that we know about COVID-19? While I understand that details may change, I think sharing metrics, et cetera, is appropriate. Transparency is key. In that vein, I'm asking you to consider hosting a live town hall on the issue where parents and guardians come together and have their answer, have their questions answered in real time. Can you commit to that? Given the complexity of the medical science, evidence, data coming out daily, and COVID to return to school, et cetera, what clinicians, physician, nurses, mental health professionals is the district consulting with? And if they are not any, why not? Related to above, if you are consulting clinicians, are any of them officially on the return to school committees you have in place? If not, why not? Related to two and three above, does the district have an official medical advisory board to consult in order to find and study, interpret all relevant science data evidence in order to help facilitate return to school? If not, why not? Reopening schools for face-to-face learning in addition to equity and identifying practice policies and institutional barriers, including institutional racism and privilege, which perpetuate opportunity and achievement gaps in the district and address these barriers, are the most important issues for ETHS in this moment? The data, the evidence, and the science show that they are both inextricably linked. The longer we keep schools closed, the worse the educational gaps become and the more all of our kids suffer. As Dr. Kimball noted in her December 2020 letter to you and the board, the equity gap we know of exists now and is an equity cana- canyon. I believe reopening schools in a safe and equitable manner and accordance with current and ever-changing evidence, science, and data is urgent for our community, but can only be done in the right way and earn the trust of the community if medical experts and professionals are advising you along the way. We are fortunate to have these people in our community. They want to help you. I ask that you take them up on their offer to assist you to create the unique ETHS solution for reopening our incredible school. Thank you so much for your time. I look forward to hearing from you. Sincerely, Susan Feltz. Next, uh, third public comment is Lori Hatton. "Happy New Year. We're looking forward to uplifting 2021. I thought that in advance of the upcoming 2022 board meeting, I would email you some of my concerns as a part of our senior regarding e-learning. I ask this email be read to the board, uh, during public comment into the meeting record. Before I get into the details, I did want to thank you for the time you have dedicated over the years to ensure ETHS continues to be a great place for all students. I also wanted to thank the board for their work and commitment to ETHS, particularly over the past year. Unfortunately, at our house, since the start of e-learning, it hasn't been a great day to be a Wildkit. Late last school year, my daughter transitioned from an IP to a 504 as an introvert, who is very shy in class. She now barely participates via Zoom. No relations have been made with her teachers as cameras tend to be off and no one-to-one discussions have taken place. Additionally, we have no contact at all from the school's special education department regarding services or as a check-in. I have not bothered to raise the issue since the board member of Evanston case. I know that so many other families have larger struggles. I do not want to take up any school resources. Academically, I am doing my best to fill in the holes left by insufficient schooling. Many of my daughter's classes end early, thus providing her barely two hours of instruction each week. Some give no assignments on Monday. Additionally, classes have been canceled as teachers have had to attend IP meetings or have planned absences. In these cases, no substitutes were provided and no additional work was given for students in the work on the class. My daughter's learning loss will be particularly evident next year as she is planning on going to college outside of Illinois and thus her classmates that have been in school for all, all of their senior, high school senior year. Even more harmful than the growing academic losses are social consequences of remote learning. It's impossible not to recognize the negative impact to the emotional health of teenagers that are stuck in their rooms on computers all day. I have heard arguments on both sides, uh, on the needs and challenges concerning school opening. I look at nearby school districts that have opened, even with the hybrid model, uh, and see that while they have fewer students, they ha- also have much smaller campuses. While ETHS administration has provided some information, I still am uncertain why the entire campus cannot be used, including the outside athletic fields, with even sideless tents to protect from sun and rain. Additionally, my daughter has asked, why can't students attend class and have teachers remote if the teachers are not willing to come inside the school? I don't know the answer to this. I would think the ETH, that ETHS could retain adults to serve as monitors to, to make sure students practice social distancing and that IT systems are working that connect their teachers with their students. So I have, so I have two outstanding questions. Has ETHS considered having some outdoor classes perhaps early April after spring break? And has ETHS considered using adults, not teachers, to monitor students in classes who are not connected online with teachers? They will, th- this will allow the hybrid you were introduced last August to be implemented, even if teachers are willing, unwilling to come back to the building. I know that you and the board share my frustrations. As a parent of a child with only five months, more months at ETHS, I so greatly hope that you will find a way to allow her and her fellow classmates to spend more time walking the halls of ETHS before they graduate. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Lori Hatton. Uh, the fourth public comment is from Angela Blasing. "District 202 administrators and board, I am a parent of an eighth grader who is eager to start at ETHS in the fall. I am writing tonight to provide honest feedback on where I believe my eighth grade families stand with respect, where I believe many eighth grade families stand with respect to enrollment next year. I believe hundreds of families that are contemplating moving are sending their kids to private schools if District 202 does not reopen in a meaningful way soon. Parents are losing faith that ETHS is prepared to reopen in fall, in full next fall, and many will be making decisions on next year's enrollment in the next few months. We all know that ETHS will suffer by the loss of enrollment, both financially and by losing kids with great potential to do well and to represent the school far into the future. I mention this only to remind you that your actions on reopening now impacts decisions for years ahead. Our community is looking to you, for you to open schools and stop delaying, stop fear mongering, and do what the best interest of all students immediately. Angela Blazing." The next public comment, number five, is from Betsy Lane. "Dear School Board members and administrators, thank you for your leadership in tack, trying to tackle the difficult decisions that need to be made for the education and health of our community. As you plan to revisit the school's reopening, I would like to urge you to create a medical advisory board to help with the decisions on reopening school. It is important that you have qualified voices helping you make decisions moving forward. I'm unaware that such a group exists. What are you, where are you on this point? What medical advice are you relying on in your decisions? I have, uh, been following other school districts and countries that successfully have sent kids back to school. I'm alarmed at news headlines and the mental health of many of our young people as e-learning continues. One of our parents, Dr. Valerie Kimball, who is a medical professional serving young people in our area, expressed concerns, uh, that she is currently seeing in a letter that was read into the record in the December meeting. A medical advisory board could help with understanding the negative mental effects our children are bearing, uh, beyond the academic disadvantage of an online learning platform. As I wrote to the board last month, I believe that it is imperative that the school at a minimum attempt to reopen in a hybrid plan, model. E- even one day a week would likely help these kids socially and emotionally. Please adjust your plans to reopen in your meeting. Finally, could you board please address the lack of classes on Monday? I do not understand why the additional day is still not, uh, is still needed every week. It is well-known that kids are not getting through the same material that they would be if they were in school. So it seems counterproductive to lose an entire day of instruction each week. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Betsy Lane." Sixth public comment is from Kay Sternstein. "Dear Dr. Witherspoon Campbell and Doctors Witherspoon Campbell and the entire District 202 Board of Education, Happy New Year. I hope that you've had a restful holiday break and I want to upfront thank you for your service to our community. I write a letter, uh, I wrote a letter that was read in the board meeting and I also thought up the direct email to Doctor Witherspoon and Campbell last week. I know that everyone is incredibly busy, but since I have yet to get a response, I'm trying again. I sincerely hope that someone will respond to this this time. I will cut to the chase and ask the following. One, how's ETHS return to school plan for the 2021 school year changed since this summer to accommodate all the things we know about COVID-19? While I understand the details may change, I think sharing details, metrics, et cetera, is appropriate and transparency is key in that vein. I also, uh, ask that you host a live town hall on an issue where parents and guardians are allowed to speak, uh, ask questions, and have them answered in real time. Can you commit to that? Two, given the complexity of medical science, uh, evidence, data coming out daily on COVID-19 return to school, what clinicians, physicians, nurses, mental health professionals is the district consulting? If yes, please identify them. If they're not, any, why not? Three, if your consulting clinicians are any of them officially on the return to school committee uh, you have in place? If yes, please explain. If not, why not? Four, does the district have an official medical advisory board to consult in order to find and study, interpret all relevant science data and evidence in order to help facilitate return to school? If not, why not? Reopening schools for face-to-face learning in addition to equity and identifying practice policies and institutional barriers, including institutional racism and privilege, which perpetuates opportunities and achievement gaps in the district and address these barriers, are a single most important issue for ETHS in the moment? The data and evidence and science shows, uh, so, the science show that they are both inextricably linked. The longer we keep schools closed, the worse the educational gaps become and all kids suffer. As Dr. Kimball noted in December 2020, letter to you and the board, the equity gap we know exists and is now an equity canyon. I believe reopening schools in a safe and equitable manner and in, uh, occur accordance with current and ever-changing science, evidence, science, and data is urgent for our community, but it can only be done the right way and earn the trust of the community if medical experts and professionals are advising along the way. We are fortunate to have these opportunities for our community. Uh, they want to help you. I ask that you take them up on their offer to assist to create a unique ETHS solution to reopening our incredible school. Thank you so much for your time. I look forward to hearing from you. Sincerely, Kai Sternstein, Parent Junior ETHS." Final public comment, uh, is from Jim and Suzie McKee. Uh, "We are writing today as evidence, residents, and parents of a freshman at ETHS. As we all surely agree, schooling is, uh, essential to our students' well-being, their ability to engage, thrive, and acquire the skills necessary to succeed on their educational path toward adulthood. We appreciate the efforts that teachers and administrators have made, but it's in remote schooling is a subpar environment for achieving these goals, especially in providing the social, emotional environment that fosters the development of these attributes. While some lucky students can learn and engage through a remote environment, we know that many are failing, regressing, unengaged, and simply dropping out, slipping through the cracks. We understand that at times, schools need to be paused, such as when the virus first appeared, uh, and the administration and the medical community scrambled to understand and determine how to safely organize schools. However, it's been 10 months since doing the closing and to continue indefinitely cannot be the answer. In this time, European countries and many large and small school districts all across America have grappled with the same issue and have prioritized, determined, and implemented best practices to safe and successful reopening of schools. Even though some of those schools end up having to pause in-person instruction at some point after reopening, we feel that students will still have been better served than by maintaining a prolonged closure, as has happened than by maintaining a prolonged closure as has happened at ETHS. When the hybrid model was announced before, uh, the current school year, we found it to be a well-thought-out and respite reasonable way to begin the year, providing limited in-person instruction would have allowed students and teachers to stay safe. Those students develop connections to the schools, their classes, teachers and the school community. We were disappointed days later when the plan was abruptly canceled. Looking back, we view this as an opportunity that was lost to open school as a way, uh, when cases were very low. We watched the E-Town Live presentation at the time with much, uh, made of the outbreak among students in Lake Zurich athletic programs, but we did not see the local cases and their positivity rates had changed. Since then, we have been waiting for someone to disclose or some disclosure about metrics, uh, guiding your decision-making and we'd still like to know more. Additionally, we have questions about this status of negotiations with the teachers and the union over the return to work requirements. There has been much speculation about the lack of teacher union buy-in, having played a large role in scuttling the plan to return to the hybrid model this fall. Was that the case? Vaccinations are now being distributed here in Illinois. Teachers have been moved to category one B, just below the healthcare workers and LCTF residents. Given the priority across the vaccines, the teachers are being afforded, do we have a commitment that once vaccinated, they will return to in-person instruction? Uh, it has been reported that teachers' unions, some California scooterists are not going to return in-person instruction once vaccinated. If there are other issues with the teachers are raising, we'd like to know what they are and have a chance to help address those. Uh, since March, we have learned much about the cases spreading, how schools can and do operate safely across America, Europe and the world. We feel lucky that the largest square footage high school in America, ETHS has ample physical space to ensure distancing of students once in the building. We also have, live in a community with vast resources, including world-class university hospitals and the, and, uh, community anxious to help. You will feel, yet we feel excluded from decisions and want to know more, have more opportunities to ask questions uh, and hear answers about, uh, what you need to reopen schools to have an open discussion about what we as a community can do to make that happen. With that in mind, respectfully ask for transparency and community engagement and involvement specifically request that you agree to hold a real-time, open question and answer town hall meeting to discuss these issues as well as information of a community advisory board similar to what District sixty-five and many other school districts, nearby school districts have formed, composed of local doctors, engineers, parents and district staff with the goal of helping the district navigate how and when to reopen schools safely and to give the broader community a seat at the table in the process. Look forward to your responses and thank you much for your hard work in addressing this difficult situation. Sincerely, Jim and Suzie McKay. That concludes this evening's public comment.
Thank you, Dr. Beavis. Thank you for reading all of those, um, to us. All right. So we will move on, um, with our agenda. The next agenda item is, uh, FOIA's. We have six FOIA's that are in the packet and, uh, Dr. Beavis, would you like to say anything about them?
No, there's six FOIA's, uh, the response, the, uh, the responses, uh, are, are in the packet.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, next we are at board committee reports. Um, do we have any reports?
I just wanted to very, I, I just wanted to very briefly, um, say two things about Ed Redd. Um, number one, all the board members and I think administrators should have received the email concerning the legislative summit that will be taking place virtually later this month. It's an extraordinary opportunity to get in on virtual Zoom meetings with our state legislators. And I would urge everybody to take a look at the schedule, sign up for whatever sessions you're available for. There also will be speakers, um, still working on the details related to the keynote speaker. Um, but we've had extraordinary interest in the legislative summit. So it's in, in some ways, doing things virtually has enabled a broader audience for events like this. Um, so it's kind of exciting and of course it's also free. So that's a big plus. Um, and then I just also wanted to note real quickly, um, it's still sort of, um, a work in progress. Um, but the Legislative Black Caucus filed their, um, education omnibus bill last week as part of the veto session. It's, it started out as a 500-page document. It's probably still around that. Um, but the terms of the bill itself have undergone a whole bunch of changes, as I know Eric and his team are aware. Um, and it, it remains to be seen exactly how that's going to shake out as a final product. But, um, lots and lots of interesting ideas contained within the bill, um, some of which might be a little bit of a stretch, given the financial constraints of our state and individual districts. Um, but laudable motives, um, with a lot of the, um, proposed suggestions in this bill. So we'll see where that goes. Um, Legislative Black Caucus also has, it, it's a four-pillar plan. So they have legislative pieces related to other areas besides just education, but the education piece alone was pretty big. So, um, look out for more information on how that shakes out to come.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. You're right that, that, uh, summit is easy to attend. So I think I, I would encourage folks to attend as well. All right. Um, other reports? Okay, we are at the student board report. Um, Carmia.
Hello, everybody. So I don't have anything super grand to report today. I know there was a lot of important reports that you guys did. Um, but basically, uh, the student union, what we've been doing is just trying to figure out a new way to get um, more student voice, um, and more student feedback for e-learning because we had originally done a survey back in October that, um, was talking about or asking pretty much about just students, e-learning experience, the homework, the workload, how everything's been going with that. And I presented it als- on a day that we also had a big, um, school survey that was sent out from like the administration as well. And so, you know, I don't know if anyone remembers that, but I also had the chance in these past two weeks to present it to the, um, got this teacher union, this, that was today at one o'clock and then also, um, the I'm blanking on the, another group of administrators, um, that I also presented to, um, and so it was the teachers that directly got to hear the student feedback from me and, um, kind of hear the recommendations that we had moving forward to kind of help students that are, you know, relieve their stress levels and just kind of help e-learning go swifter for them. So we still have some stuff in the works to, you know, try to figure out how to do another survey to get more feedback and reach, you know, a different group of students, you know, or trying to reach the people that need the most help too. And find them out, find out who those people are and then find out how we can best help them. So yeah, that, that's basically.
Nice job presenting to all those folks, Carmia.
Thank you very much.
Pat, you're muted. If you were, I think you were trying to talk, but we couldn't hear you.
Oh my goodness, I said so many great things. Let's see what were they? No, I'm kidding. I was actually, um, thanking, thanking Carmia and I said you, you sound like you've been very busy. So, thank you.
Yeah, just a little bit. Just, yeah, just a little bit. Also, I just wanted to say, you know, I've been hearing just a lot of concerns from, you know, a lot of parents and going back into, um, you know, a hybrid. And I just wanted to say from a student's perspective, like I definitely, at least from my perspective personally, I definitely understand how important um, safety is. And I am struggling mentally and emotionally and, but like my question is, who isn't? Um, because, you know, we look at everybody. I know it's the teachers, the parents, the students, the dogs. I mean, everybody is, is, is struggling right now. And, you know, it's not just one person or one student or one parent. And I understand that everybody's going through this and as a student, I don't want to go back if it's not safe. And I, and, and, and like I, I wouldn't, would never want to put a teacher at risk and would never want to put a staff member or a, a student with, you know, health issues at risk. And if that's the case, then it's okay because a lot of other people are going through this and I'm going to find a way to push through. So I was just saying that from a student's perspective.
Wow, that was really well said, Carmia, in a very clear and easy to understand way. And I, you know, I just, to totally piggyback on, on your words, I, I think the point is that we're all interconnected. So we're a community and we need to look at this. Um, in that, from that interconnected perspective. But you said it better than I did. So now I'll just mute myself again.
You did say it very well and, and I appreciate, um, I appreciate your words and your sincerity as you spoke from your heart and you're right, everybody across our community, across our society has been impacted by this. Everybody. So thank you. All right, now, Dr. Witherspoon, we are ready for your report.
Great, thank you. And Carmia, you're always a tough act to follow. But thank you so much. Uh, so kudos, uh, to our twenty-six ETHS students who qualified for the Health Occupation Students of America State Competition. Uh, that'll be a march. Congratulations to our ETHS esports Overwatch team. Uh, this team is composed of six ETHS students and they actually took home the National High School Esports League Fall Major Championship. Uh, so, uh, happy for them. And, uh, again, we're, uh, uh, obviously they're using their screen time, uh, expertise, uh, for, for other fun things to do. Um, some upcoming events are very worth noting. Uh, College Planning Night for the class of 2022 will be held virtually, uh, this Thursday, January fourteenth. That's a six thirty PM. It's for juniors and their families to help gain insights about initiating the college planning process, uh, as well as the application process. Uh, we're having virtual course selection night for incoming freshmen. That will be held on Wednesday, January the twentieth, so next week. And again, uh, because the, the, the cla- groups are split up, uh, for Thursday, January twenty-first. Uh, this event is for students and parents, uh, who review the valuable information about the course selection process and are able to be, uh, getting their courses selected for next year. Uh, real excited about the incoming freshman class. Uh, ETHS is, uh, happy. We continue to, uh, be part of the partnership with FAN. Uh, lots going on. I, I know that, uh, they and we are really good about getting all that information out. Uh, I hope you're recognizing there's a lot of fan information. There are a lot of presentations. Uh, Lonnie has certainly, uh, not, uh, let down her energy level during this pandemic. Uh, but, but upcoming this Thursday night, January fourteenth, will be Christie Tate and Heidi Stevens. Uh, and so be on the lookout for FAN this Thursday night. Um, we, we are continuing with our E-Town Live, uh, twice a month. And the next one, uh, that we'll be doing will be on Friday, January the twenty-second. Those are at eight AM. But for folks who have no interest in tuning into something like that at eight AM, uh, you can go to our website, uh, anytime that day forward and they are available on demand. And, uh, and, and, and that tends to be when, when most people actually tune in. And finally, a reminder that, uh, we, we have a three-day weekend coming up. Uh, we'll be closed on Monday, the eighteenth. It's for, uh, the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. And I just want to again encourage our students and, and actually all of our families, um, use this time, use this national holiday as a chance to reflect on the life and on the teachings of the Reverend Martin Luther King. Dr. King truly is one of the, if not the most impactful person, well, I'm sorry to say the, but one of the most impactful people of the twentieth century. And his work lives on today. And what, what that great man accomplished and what he taught us are lessons that are for eternity. So I would just encourage all of our students, go online, just do a little Googling about, uh, whether it be in Evanston, whether it be in Chicagoland, whether it be anywhere in the country. There are, will be so many fine Martin Luther King Junior Day celebrations. Find at least one and participate virtually and remind yourself of the meaning of this three-day weekend. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. Thank you for that report. All right, we're at items for action and the first item for action is the approval of the Black History Month Resolution. And, uh, first we'll hear that resolution. It's going to be read by Jude Long Day.
Thank you, Pat. National Black History Month, February twenty twenty-one. Whereas millions of people were taken from their homes in Africa, in chains and were held in slavery. And whereas from sixteen nineteen to eighteen sixty-five, slavery was legal in the United States of America. And whereas twelve generations of blacks survived and lived in the United States as enslaved people with an incalculable human cost that continues to impact our society and culture. Whereas on the eve of the American Civil War, approximately four million enslaved African Americans lived in the southern region of the United States of America. And these enslaved people were the descendants of twelve to thirteen million African forebears ripped from their homes and forcibly transported to the Americas in a massive slave trade dating from the fourteen hundreds. Whereas this forced migration is one of the greatest human tragedies in the history of the world. Whereas the celebration of Black History Month began in February nineteen twenty-six with the vision of Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a noted hysteri- historian committed to encouraging all people to learn about the contributions of outstanding African Americans. Whereas the students and staff of Evanston Township High School must continue to learn about and be mindful of African Americans on a national and local level who have worked to serve the public good. Whereas the ETHS community should welcome and learn from all people of color to support the destruction of beliefs and practices that racially segregate and hinder students from believing that the American dream is for everyone. Whereas the ETHS community should also continually dedicate itself to the principle of equal justice for all people. Remain eternally vigilant against acts of racism and bigotry and continue to be a leader in empowering all students through education. Therefore, we, the District two oh two School Board proclaim that in celebration of past, present and future exceptional African-American leaders do hereby proclaim the month of February twenty twenty-one as Black History Month at Evanston Township High School.
Thank you, Jude. Thank you for reading that so well to all of us. Could we have a motion for approval, please?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Law Day?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
And Sal?
Yes.
Yep.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
The Terich?
Yes.
David Williams?
Yes. Thank you. The next item, action item, is approval of Press Policy Issue Number one oh six and that's in your packet. Could we have a motion for approval, please?
The move.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Livingston?
You're muted, Gretchen.
Yeah, she knows.
He's wrong.
Give us a thumbs up.
Nod if it's a yes. Munsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yeah.
Rolowitz?
Yeah.
The Terich?
Yes.
Long Day?
Yes.
David Williams?
Yes. Okay, the next items is the Consent Agenda, which consists of-
Yes.
Got it.
My, something was awry with my mouse and my spacer. Neither one were working.
That's all right.
Sorry. Thank you.
All right, so we're at the Consent Agenda, which consists of Approval of Construction Contract for Auditorium Renovation, Approval of Minutes from December fourteenth, twenty twenty Closed Session Meeting and December fourteenth, twenty twenty Regular Meeting, Treasurers Report from November twenty twenty, Approval of Bills, Personnel Agenda, which consists of Appointments to Staff, Support Staff, Change in Status, Educational Overloads, Stipends and Leave of Absence Certified, Other Suspension, Support Staff and there's an addendum as well. Could we have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Munsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
The Terich?
Yes.
Long Day?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
David Williams?
Yes. Thank you. All right, those are action items. We're at Old and New Business. Does anybody have old or new business they'd like to offer? If not, can I have a motion for adjournment?
We're moved.
Second.
All in favor, give me a thumbs up if you're in favor. And then wave goodbye. Thank you all. Thank you for, for coming. Thank you again for those reports.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.